Covington, you're okay.
Looking for that 30-second signal.
It's coming.
This is a special meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in the public to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this meeting is policy work with Ms. Pam Holly. Dr. Jewel Harmon, Chief Accountability Officer, will be attending the meeting via Zoom. I'm going to call roll call of the board. Director Bento.
I think I'm president.
Director Pargel.
Here.
Director Hamada.
I am present.
Vice President Par.
Here.
Okay. I'm now going to call upon Superintendent Vella for introductions.
Thank you, President Clark, members of the board. Good evening. I'd like to now call Ms. Pam Holly, our policy coordinator, who will be facilitating our policy work for this evening. Ms. Holly.
Good evening, President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Vella. Vella? How did try something different tonight and quickly go through the presentation, you all have copies, so that we can just put this down below and have the other things up instead of switching back and forth. It seems to be pretty cumbersome. So, we're going to start with what we always start with, talking about the distinctions between the policy classifications, that policy work is the board's charge, procedures is staff's charge, and we will start with nine policies as first reading. Twenty-four eleven, high school equivalency certificate. Sixty-one twelve, rental or lease of district real property. One-one-one-zero, election. One-one-one-one, oath of office. One-one-one-two, director orientation. One-one-one-three, board member residency. One-one-one-four, board member resignation and vacancy. We'll be looking at retiring one-one-one-five vacancies, which is being rolled into one-one-one-four. Twelve-twenty, board officers and duties of board members. And back to fifty-two-seventy-one for a third reading, reporting improper governmental action, which is also whistleblower, known as whistleblower protection policy. And forty-two-twenty, complaints concerning staffer programs for second reading. Any policies that we move forward will appear on the February 22 regular meeting agenda, and our next work session is on March 1st. And we will start.
Easy.
With twenty-four eleven, high school equivalency certificate. And first, I'll put it up in redline format, so you can see some of the changes, and you've seen this probably in your folders. And then if we review it with no changes showing, it's a lot easier to see this way. This was previously entitled Certificate of Educational Competency. This policy was updated to better reflect current regulations. The policy now includes eligibility requirements to take the high school equivalency tests. Additionally, it clarifies the application and decision process for determining whether an individual has what they call a substantial and warranted reason for leaving the regular high school program. Any questions?
None. I don't see any hands or heads, so I'm going to say no.
Okay, perfect. We'll roll it on to the next regular meeting agenda. The next policy is sixty-one-twelve. Sir Buzzer's quite excited by that. And again, you can see the markup here to see the changes, and then we will look at it as no changes showing. This policy addresses the process for renting or leasing surplus real property. It mentions recapturing that property if it is needed for a new school building unless, for two reasons, it's leased for affordable housing or near an international airport. The main point of this policy is that it talks that, I'm sorry, the main point of the update is that it's a violation of district policy for any person, including a renter or leasor, to carry a firearm onto district property. This does not extend to district property being rented or leased as a personal domicile. Any questions?
Anyone?
And this has nothing to do, just to make sure, this is for like permanent lease, we're vacating property, it's not, I'm using the gym as the Boy Scouts after school, right?
Correct. That would be a facilities use.
Okay.
Policy under that.
That was my question, too. I was going to ask about like the Bezos Academy at the Early Valley Learning Center, if that was going to be affected, but that's something separate. Okay. Thank you.
Again, we have a facilities use process of policy, and then that one has even more stringent with the MOU that we have and the agreement, I should say. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I had those separated.
Can we, forgive me, but going through this so fast, and I've actually gone through every one of these policies you've seen. If we could just have a few minutes before we just kind of go through this cycle so rapidly, I would really appreciate if we give it, I want to just read it over one more time in just a little time, because it seems like we're just going click, 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 and I can't keep up with it, okay? I apologize, but that's where I'm at, and I want to do it right. Thank you.
Can I ask another question? The part where we're adding the violation about carrying a firearm, isn't that already a policy that we have as a reason why specifically being added to this section?
I think because it mentions renting or leasing, so it's not actually being used for school district purposes, but it's a school district building.
And not just buildings, but land as well? So can someone rent land that we own, and this would apply to that as well?
Unless it's used for a domestic, a domicile, a residential building for a home. It doesn't apply then.
I'm going to ask Mr. Bizard.
Yeah. Mr. Bizard, would you come up and either enlighten us a little bit more with the actual question Director Benno has?
President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Vella, Ms. Antelo, and Ms. Curry. So, all of the property we have, we do not have a residential lease except for one property. Mr. Wickstrom, who lives off of 156th Street, right by the Covington Elementary School, he rents that property from us. So what this means is that in that house, since it is a domicile, it's his personal residence that he's renting from us, he can have a firearm. Any property that we have that a school function would be in that is not a domicile, no weapons are allowed. That's what that means, and that's taken straight from WASDA, I believe. And the board has the ability either to adopt that or not adopt that. Gordon and I thought that that would be, since we do have a renter in one of our buildings right now, that is owned by the school district.
The property that we lease next to Cantlake High School for the cell tower, I mean, that's land we lease, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And then we agreed upon that rental price, we voted on that, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Did we, I mean, was there any other bids? I know it's after the fact, but did we do any other bids on that besides the one we had?
So we actually reached out, and I think Mr. Cook actually reached out to, you know, a couple of consultants about what that rate was going for cell towers at the time. So, I don't know if we really want to get into the rental business, because we're a school district, but at that point in time, that's what we thought was a fair price going forward. Yes, you can actually hold out and start asking for more money. Some of the piece that came through that when we were talking through our consultants, this board needs to understand, and everybody in the community needs to understand, that cell tower is going to not only help the cell service in that area, but the school safety services and everything that we do on the safety side for that particular school, because cell service out there is horrible.
No, and I live out in that area, so I'm very familiar.
I didn't want to bring that up, but that was going to be my, that was going to be my next point.
And transparent, not that I, I mean, my cell service in my house is fine, but okay. But, and that is one reason I voted on that, but there was some dispute by one of our board directors at the time that we, you know, we were given that lease at way under market value. And I mean, I understand we have the capacity that's really going to help us out, but I mean, do you think we really did that? Did we really undersell ourselves for the cost that we could, because those, I guess, cell towers are going for a lot of money.
Yeah, at the point that that was being handled during that time when you took the vote, the market rate was fluctuating up and down. It all really depended where it needed to be. And I think some of the information that was given during that time from maybe a past board member or community, they were looking at rates from Bellevue, Seattle, where the, you know, where the land is very, very limited. There's a lot of places that they could have put this tower. They came and asked us first, so I think that that was a commitment on our part to want to make the school safe and better, so we did our due diligence to look at the market rate, and we picked that rate.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Buzzer. I think, you know, as I go, I keep learning, and more questions come out down the road, so I'm not trying to go backtrack and say I didn't do my homework at that time, but I keep, keep learning, and I appreciate you keeping me up to date, because you're on top of this, and these are fluid documents, so thank you.
You're welcome, and just so that you know, we're always learning, too.
Anyone? I have a question, quickly.
Sorry.
I see the $10,000, right? It says here that it's 45 days before the rental or release effect, if the value of the rental or lease is $10,000 or more. That means what period? One month period?
And you're looking at this one?
Right. I mean, I'm just wondering, you know, from Pam.
I think they're talking about the value of the land altogether.
Oh, yes, absolutely. That's what it is. It's the value of the land altogether.
Oh, okay.
And we would not have, I don't, I wouldn't, I do not see a lease that's more than $10,000 at this point in time. As a matter of fact, I know we don't, because I'm looking at the sheets that we do have for leasing and lessers right now.
Sorry, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So, we have facilities, rental stuff as in one hand, so this is talking about property. So, property is just buildings, or does that include land we own? I just, I guess I need a more specific definition of like, what do we call property?
So, property is any parcel that we own in this district that does not have a school on it. Well, let me go back. Property is all the property that we own, whether it has a building on it or a school or anything. This is residual property that is real property that we do not have a school or a building on it that we use for K-12 at this point in time. That's what this is talking about. And then leasing of that plot or parcel. We do have a property that does have a building on it. Yes, I know there's one, I know that we have, it's an old barn. We don't utilize it for anything, but that's what this is. This is just for real property that we have in the district that can be used to build on later on in our district.
Okay, thank you. No equestrian? I'm kind of disappointed, but that's okay.
Well, I just want to follow up with this, which is, what if it's less than $10,000 hypothetically?
We don't have any, any property out there that's less than $10,000.
The rental of it, right?
It's the value of.
The value of the.
Of the land plus the buildings attached to it?
That is correct. Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing that, that owns to this denomination right here that we have currently.
So it's like, 10,000 is the bare minimum?
That is, that's correct.
Like saying, okay. Okay.
So, President Clark, I'll look to you to.
Anyone else? Any more questions?
I'm done.
All right. We're good.
Thank you, President Clark. Thank you, Mr. Buzzer. Ms. Holly.
If the consensus is to move that forward, we will move that forward then. Our next policy is election, one-one-one-zero, first reading. The only difference really in this policy now is that the primaries are held on the first Tuesday in August, not the third. That's the change in this policy, and candidate filing periods have been updated per the RCW. President Clark made a comment that we don't have county overlap, so this section should be removed, and this is where it's talking about if the school district includes territory in two or more counties. So if the board is in agreement, we can remove that because it does not apply to us.
Yeah, that was my comment here, is we only have King County, so.
And I just have a comment that the election dates and the primaries have been changed for many years. We should have updated this long ago, so glad we're doing it now.
And the part about vacancy that's on here, that's, that's talked about elsewhere, that's why that's being removed?
It is. It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are we good?
We're good.
We're good.
Good to move ahead?
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. This next policy is one-one-one-one. It is new to KSD, oath of office. This talks about needing either a notary or a school district official to administer the oath, and then it needs to be filed with the county, and as secretary of the board, Superintendent Vella is the one who will administer that oath.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I have a comment. Sorry, Tim, but I'm going to comment. And I asked this of our attorney earlier, because I, I know the law has changed, so we have to do it, but why on earth, after you've taken the oath of office, do we have to also sign a resolution, which we've never had to sign and adopt before, and have it notarized? I mean, that's, I mean, why did they change that law? I mean, are they trying to really rope us in into a court case or what, Paul? You know, I asked you that before.
I suspect it has to do with having, putting it in print, so there's no deniability.
Yeah, they want paperwork, but that, you know what that means, legal.
Yeah, everything we do, it's legal. I'm sorry.
Is that an elected official?
Yes, but you've already taken an oath of office. Does the President of the United States have a resolution for that, and does he have a notarized copy? I don't think so.
No, but he's better paid.
Oh, that's what it's, oh, oh, I see.
It's literally, it's about local offices, and there are small towns and very small school districts, so they're just trying to cover, making sure that everything is identified in print, because if.
You sign a marriage certificate and have it notarized.
I just think it's overkill. That's all, just my opinion.
All right. Any other opinions?
I have a lot of opinions, but not about this.
Thank you. With that, I'll consider we're moving on.
Thank you, President Clark.
I wonder why the seats are not filled.
I know. This is good quality right here.
This is more fun than most.
Let me call your attention to one-one-one-two.
Thank you.
Yes.
This is updating director orientation, again, first reading. This addresses orientation points such as how to arrange for school visits, how to respond to complaints concerning staffer programs, how the board should handle confidential information, and how to request information regarding school operations. This is, this policy also had items suggested to be given to board members. President Clark suggested that some of these items be removed, and I'll leave it to the board for discussion.
If, if I can, okay. I mean, they started into building budgets and so forth. You don't need 44 copies of building budgets, because, oh, by the way, if you need it, you can ask for it, but if we give it to you, then of course, I want to know where you keep it filed, because it becomes burdensome over time. The, actually, there were, Pam, what was, I.
Can you see the items up showing there? We can go through them, one by one?
No, I don't think we need to do that. I.
Which ones did you want to remove, Tim?
So, the one, I asked you to think of it in this fashion, right? I'm in my sixth year on this board, and the question becomes, when did you actually make use of this? And that's where I started to target, because what it became was overkill, and to make matters worse, things change annually, and so then you'd be back dealing with, you know, handbooks that would go forever, and it doesn't make any sense. If you need it, you can ask for it, but the fact is, you're not going to be referring to it on a monthly basis or anything close to that. So, Pam, I have my, all I have is the front page, the first one circled, but I knew there were other ones.
So, I know some of the things you mentioned were student rights, responsibilities, and conduct, district staff handbook.
Right.
I think you mentioned collective bargaining agreements, and I'm, I'm pointing out that many of these things are found on the web.
Yeah, you can do it online, so that is a way of you seeing it, you know? So I think, you know, about the overkill, I mean, you're providing a website that has that all, that updated, and I'm going to push back on this, because when, again, when I was, first came on this board three and a half years ago, we were thrown into this board, my computer was in front of me, they didn't even give me the code to turn it on. And I think board directors need to have as much knowledge at their fingertips as humanly possible.
Correct.
And honestly, this A through KL, again, having a knowledge of how to get on the website and find all this, we have to be responsible to do some of this, too. So as the workload, I don't want to take any of it out of there, and, I mean, I'd just like to see where we sit down and have our board more prepared when they walk in here, because again, in three and a half years, I'm still learning, and that doesn't mean that I would have learned all that at the first day from a superintendent, but to walk in the door, sit down, and not even have the code to the thing, that's not the way you want a board director to work. That's not fair.
I also think that, sorry.
I was going to, I was going to ditto that. I think more information is better than less information, and also, like, there's some things like achievement test results I want access to, like supposedly we do, I tried logging into Tableau and I couldn't, and so it's just stuff like that. I think everything, having all the access, even if it seems like overkill, like I want the information, so I think, like, I love to see what student rights, responsibilities, and conduct are. I want to see what the students see, so like, for me, all this is great. My only negative on this is like, I get we do WASDA policy, but I don't think they should be first. I want to know about my district first, then I'll learn about all the WASDA stuff, but that's just my bias, because I feel like they have their hands in everything, and I think that our board, we need to do what's best for our district, and we'll use the WASDA stuff, but I was just like, they shouldn't be first, but that was just my editorial remark.
Well, I wouldn't say that's in an order of importance, but I would say that, what I noticed on here is it doesn't say how long that it needs to be before, it just says newly elected.
Before you get the information, you mean?
Yeah, and so I don't know if that should, if that would be more in a procedure than a policy, but to your point, how long is newly? Because I, I think that, again, that more information is better, but to President Clark's point, is there something, do we need to specify that it can be provided, or information on where to find, or some better wording around that? Because, I mean, come on, do we really want to have five nine-inch binders?
Well, I don't want paper regardless.
No, exactly, right. And so, and we want to be able to see the most updated and things like that, so I think that there should be some nod to the century that we live in, and saying that there's an electronic link to.
Yes.
And we can definitely do that. I think part of the problem is we're seeing will be provided, but it doesn't mean paper copies of everything.
Yeah.
We have access on our district website and through Staff Link, which you all have access to, to look at a lot of these things without paper. In fact, I would say most of these things.
I, I would say, just as a personal note, it would be nice, as kind of the new kid on the block on this one, to almost have this list, because sometimes you don't know what you don't know, and I didn't even know to ask for some of these things, and it took going, oh, that would be really helpful to be able to come in better educated to the next decision, having this, and so I, I think this is actually a pretty good starting point that would say, hey, here's some of the things that you might want to start looking at, so you're not feeling like you're always playing catch-up. So that would be my, my suggestion, and I think that we all acknowledge that we can always do better, and I think that this is something that we could. And I think that this is something that we could do better on, is the onboarding of our-
Definitely, and I'll tell you, this policy was updated. We haven't had this list in front of us either. So it's been updated, and we can definitely, you know, when the policy, if it goes through and is adopted, you have that list there of everything, and we can make sure to help every board member get to whatever item on here and others that they need to.
Yes.
I'd also add, Dr. Margill, that, that it's not the exhausted list, exhaustive list, because board members, as President Clark mentioned, come on with different experiences they might have knowledge of, right? There are pieces that they don't. And I believe number two in the paragraph, it is request information regarding any school operation. So we could provide, continue to provide prompt requests, and yet, or have access to information. So I think that covers really any need, but it's a good start.
And I think the WASDA, Director Benno, the WASDA portion being in there, you know, it's just information on, like, Open Public Meeting Act, what to, you can do and cannot do, and that type of thing. And I think that's, it was in there to begin with, and actually WASDA updated with all these other things following. So it was the only thing there to begin with.
Yep.
And it has about parley pro, which you love.
Which I love.
There you go.
Sturgis, Roberts, Democratic rules, tell me any, I can help.
So does the board feel that it can move on or should move on the way it's listed?
If I can, now, having listened to the conversation. Leslie, first of all, just in contrast to when you were on boarded, when I was on boarded, Vella, or, excuse me, Vargas had me sit down, and I spent one hour with a finance director, with law, with human relations, and one other department, because these were the major unfolding issues. And since we have gone to specific building plans for academics, you'll notice we get presentations, you'll be getting one at the, at the next meeting. So if, if I'm hearing you correctly, first of all, you, you were, you're going to get A, because everybody gets that. And since the beginning of time, I don't think anybody's ever escaped getting the huge notebook of policies.
We tried.
We had to ask for it.
Oh.
Oh, I got mine.
I got mine without-
It was my welcome gift.
I had to ask.
I had to ask for it. They wouldn't give it to me.
Well, okay, then, so, again, but we, but we acknowledge, yours was an extremely unusual example of how, how not to onboard.
President Clark, I do remember Director Margill needing two backpacks. But no, seriously, I wanted-
Seriously.
And they didn't tell me I didn't have to bring it to the next meeting, too. So I showed up with it the next time.
What I really wanted to say is-
It's a workout.
All, all the discussion is very helpful for me. As Superintendent Anne Santello, we've talked extensively about the onboarding that we're already starting to do differently. And it's really to provide access and information to our board as they need it in a way that is also during a time that they, is most helpful for them, because you all are busy. And so, you know, it's, it's yes and, a variety of ways to do so. Your discussion is really helpful to us, and it has been. Santello has great ideas on how this can continue, so, thank you.
Okay, but if I can. So the phrase at the very first sentence is, new directors will be provided with. And I would recommend, with the exception of A and C, and shall, you will be provided with those and directions on how to access and find information on the following. Does that work? Because that'll then put you onto the website and where to locate it and so forth.
I would say directions and accessibility, I think, to your point. If you have to have a password, you have to be able to.
Yes.
And then the list is there?
Yes, that is correct.
We're not taking the list away.
Pam, have you got?
Got it, with direction. If we say new directors will be provided with directions and access information for the following, does that work?
Yes, that'll work.
Thank you.
And, and, you know-
And/or?
And physical copies of A and C.
Absolutely not, I don't want physical copies. I want access to it, I don't want paper.
I know, but for the, for the-
But everything else sounds okay. I don't want paper.
Okay. Got it.
That's what you do, that's your choice.
We'll see.
Really, I agree with you, because I don't want to get that.
But I mean, that's, this is for everybody, too.
Right, right, right.
And that's the thing, we remember, like, the policies aren't for the people sitting in these chairs. The policies are for everyone from now and the future. Doesn't matter who's in these chairs. We want to make sure that what we put on here will fit for everybody.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And for us, and for us as staff, we want to make sure we provide the board with accessibility, that they're able to set policy. So that's what I think is helpful to hear.
Do we have it in our procedures about what new is considered new? But no longer than X number of days?
I don't think we do.
That's a great suggestion, definitely.
Could I also make one more comment about accessibility? So for people who have visual impairments and stuff like that, we want to make sure that accessibility looks different for everyone who's in these chairs, and to keep that in mind as well, to get to-
Accommodation, yeah.
Good points.
All right, can we go on to one?
So, so just quickly, the, if you go to the paragraph, this is not the one that we want to correct, right? Because it says a board chair instead of board president at the bottom, if you go down. The first sentence, the board chair.
Or the designee.
Yeah.
And couldn't president be a-
It could be president, yeah.
President?
Right, right.
Yeah, would our documents say president, not chair? Are we-
Right, 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 right.
Okay, that's good to know.
And the other thing I wanted to ask is, it says how to, right? And then number one, it says arrange for visit of schools and/or admin offices.
Right.
Arrange with the schools?
Information on how to arrange for visits with the schools. So we would provide new members information on how to do that.
Right.
You just don't walk in and say, here I am.
I know, here I am, yeah.
Love me.
Specifically would be, obviously, principal, office staff, and who does that kind of scheduling.
We good?
Okay.
President Clark, I want to make sure we're pausing. I'd look to you to move us to the next.
I'm hearing silence, so I'm going on to 1113.
Thank you.
There is almost no change to this policy. Mostly what you're doing is reviewing it to say you've updated it and looked at what is current. The only change is, instead of saying at which time, it says at that time. And we've talked, added with the change of residence in there as well.
Yeah.
So that is it on this one.
It makes no sense to me, this, but it is the, the rule, so I have to accept it, but-
It's RCW.
Yeah, I know, and it's crazy, because as a board director, I'm elected district-wide. I'm not sitting here, for example, I'm District Four. I'm not sitting here for families on District Four only. I'm sitting here for every single child in the school district.
Yep.
But this is limiting.
Actually, as long as you, your term is there, you can move within the district and still continue to serve your term.
But the thing is that it limits, it limits the people who have to live in the district they run. And that, I mean, council doesn't even do that in our cities anymore. And I get it, it's supposed to be representation and all that, but in some districts, you have a lot more people that are more active and want to get involved, and, and it limits the people that can be on the board. I've fought that, but it's RCW, so you've got to go to the legislature to change. So it's null and void here.
Right. Just, that's, I just wanted to voice my opinion, that's all.
I, I agree, I will, I agree, because it's kind of limiting in its wording.
But I think to your point, it's not until the end of your term, it's until the next election.
It says right there, yeah, you can stay on, if you, for example, move, if you've been elected, you can stay on until the next election. But the next election, you cannot run at that-
Correct.
As long as you move in the district.
Exactly.
If I moved to another city, I couldn't.
Right, you'd have to resign.
Right, right.
Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll move that one down the trail.
It's just a glance at 1114. Our retiring 1115, it's been combined with 1114. It just rolled vacancy into board member resignation, so it's all one policy now.
And you'll, you'll notice that it distinguishes between resignation time indicated versus resignation and then the next board meeting when it's declared.
Yeah, I saw that change, yeah, that's a good point.
Yep. Any further comment?
I did have one question on this one, under vacancy. When it says that we'll receive applications from any qualified persons, does it define what a qualified person?
That's, that's same as under elected.
Okay.
Is that not correct, Pam?
I believe it's talking about as long as you're a resident in the director of district.
Yeah, you have to have that first.
That's what they're considering as far as qualified, not whether you're, you know, have a political background or that.
And that's actually checked by King County.
But there's other qualifications, like, get to be a registered voter and some other things, right?
To be a board member, yes.
Yeah, and that, under qualification.
I, I was just, and I'm sorry, where is that listed? I guess I'm, I'm missing that, under 1114?
As far as qualifications?
Yes.
I don't believe it's in this at all.
No, it's-
It's in another one, though.
It's in, it's in another one, we just went through. Election is 110.
Yeah. It spells it out. But King County checks all that, voter ready. They check with our executive assistant on all that. That's their job.
Zantello is very good about checking when people apply to see if they're in the correct district.
Yeah, I will say that during our last one, that Ms. Santello did a great job looking at all the different ones. But what we learned from it is, yeah, if it doesn't pass there, we can't, they couldn't run.
Yeah.
And we actually, I believe we found one that didn't know that.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, it's, it's double-checked.
No, and, and no disrespect, and I think it would just be, I, I'd like to have the language be in a place where anybody who would like to either put their name in the hat, or what it, that the, when something says qualified, that that has a place where it's defined.
We can put a link to that.
That would be great, thank you very much.
Good idea. It's transparency specific.
Because it's not, it's not in that election policy.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the election policy and I don't see it either.
I think we have qualifications, or we have a-
It's somewhere.
A reference to how to get to King County for qualifications.
In our second reading, could we just make sure that that's-
I will let you know for sure.
Perfect, thank you very much, that's, that's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for any change, just that anybody who wants to read this can know what-
What the qualifications are.
Qualifies, is qualified?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Any further, further questions?
Nope.
Okay, well, move on from 113.
Actually, we are, 115, we are retiring. We rolled that into this one. And next will be a policy 1220, which is board officers and duties of board members. And the biggest takeaway from this one, let me pull it up, is that the legislative representative is elected amongst the board members at the first regular meeting of the year in even-numbered years, which was last, in December, even-numbered years. But will serve for a period of two years. So this is a-
Lucky you, Leslie.
I have to get that.
Wait, this isn't written by WASDA, it's written by Leslie, weird.
No, no, I'm sure that will, no, no.
That's awesome.
And, and let me echo on that. I'm going to venture in here and surely drown, but, but it's-
Superintendent, can you save us in this?
No, it, it is extremely important, as I've gone through the job, for all the ins and outs of it, and even on WASDA and going to their meetings, most of these people, including somebody that's been here to, to do a retreat with a Sandier, says it's important to have a legislative rep be there for more than one year, because there's a lot to absorb. And getting along with the WASDA people, going to the meetings, getting along with your legislators. And I can see why the consistency. But as I understand, I was elected under the grandfather clause, correct? So I did not have anything to do with this.
You were.
Just saying.
Just trying to get out of it, it's not going to.
No.
I, I would say, seriously, the legislative rep in the past, it's a lot to ramp up with, especially if you've not been a part of that process before. And I would say the, the relationship between the board and the superintendent and his or her staff is critical, and so that the, those initiatives sometimes are different than WASDA, or in, at times aligned. And, and how do we work together so that consistency is important? I would also say that during the reports, it's important for other board members to really be focusing in on those key issues or initiatives and things that are going on. State, because at some point, there'll be a new legislative rep. So all that to say, I would be in agreement with that because of that consistency that you're mentioning. And I think that makes a difference.
I know this, because I've been through this last year.
We threw you out there.
Yes, and I had to learn and actually figure out how to be effective and being involved with WASDA and their legislative representatives of different school districts, and, and kind of understand how that process works. And it really is, it's a very crucial position. Also needs that ramping up time, because as soon as I ramped up, the decision was over, so.
That's a reality.
Right.
Yep.
It's not your fault.
When I look at the language for the legislative representative, when appropriate, the legislative representative obtains the board's support. Isn't it always appropriate to get the support for anything that's going to go to the assembly?
Well, there's a, there's a little trap here. Clearly, WASDA has an entire agenda, and you end up blending in behind that. But once in a great moon, you will literally have something that's regional and specific. And those, and under those circumstances, you want to make sure the board is speaking with one voice. So it's just a matter of the uniqueness of the situation.
Yeah, I was asking for help with the assembly last year, and nobody.
I was way too busy. And that, you need, that, you need help.
That, I, really, because I, I can tell you, it is two days of non-stop being, and it was Zoom, so.
And I had planned to be on, but I, it's too much last year.
All right, but no changes for this particular policy? Go ahead. Megan?
No, I said, could you just give me one moment?
Sure.
Let's look at it with no markup, that might be easier that way. Other than I highlighted the change with the two-year from one year for legislative rep.
I don't know if I want to bring this up.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, when I open up the can, you'll see why. In dealing with the media and the public in general, the chair present or their designee will serve as the spokesperson for the board. So, is that stating that any posting about decisions made by the board should only be made in, in social media by the board president?
If it's a board decision.
Let me make sure that we all understand the question. So, once a decision has been made by the board, that you mentioned that that spokesperson for the board is the chair or the president in media or wherever that might be. In addition, you asked, is, is that also true on social media that the board president also state on that particular?
Well, and I think actually, for the last sentence in that paragraph says, "The chair president will avoid speculating upon actions or decisions that the board may take, but has not yet taken," right? So, what, what my question is on this one is, is this because the board president will speak for the board in all public, including, in all media, right? Public in general, whatever that looks like. And since the board president cannot speculate upon decisions that the board may take, the only thing that could ever be posted about any decisions made by the board to the public would come through the board president and only specifically on decisions already made, not anything that's pending board decision.
I, I would say yes. In what you just explained, that is, if something hasn't taken place yet, that board president, even though that's the chair, couldn't speak to that, because that hadn't happened. That's first. And then, yes, to the other definition you just had of a decision had been made and there's a media request or what would obviously help support, of course, but that they would be speaking as the board, and that's your, that's who speaks for the board.
But that's a media request, not social media, right? Because like, I have a voicemail that I'm gonna give to Tim. The Seattle Times wants to talk to me about something. I'm like, you're gonna talk to Tim. So I'm gonna give that to you, but because that's, I'm not supposed to talk to media. The board president is in charge of speaking for the board. I guess my follow-up question is like, at our last board meeting, the educators of color like asked us to post up on our social media about what we did last year. So like, would that be a violation? Because I was like, hey, remember this from last year? Like, is, like, I guess that's a good follow-up question. So then, if I did, I broke this policy. But I think it's a great thing to post. So like, it's, the question then is, media versus social media, is there a line?
Yeah, and, and it goes on to say, just to make sure that we're all, and the public in general. So, so media doesn't say social media, it's in the public in general. And so, think of the public, how they receive information, and the premise for this policy, as I see it, it is role of the board and board members, duties of the board. So, back to the question that Director Margill, you asked, that the one piece that I, I think we agreed on that piece is Director Beno is, the social media fit with media, is what I heard. So, I, I think that's a question for the board to discuss.
Well, and I think there's a further question on this, too.
Me, too.
Superintendent Vella, I think it is, if we have taken a position as a board and voted on it, then that should be the position of the board. If you have a personal position on something that's not exactly the board's position, you have a right on my social media, when I'm saying I'm speaking as an individual. I'm not gonna give up, and Paul knows how I feel about this. I always will have a right to say how I feel on things. It, it doesn't mean I'm going to go against something that's a formal presentation, but I have a right. You're not going to tell me that I can't be on social media or anybody, that I have to talk to the board before I tell them if I want to go to the merry ground tonight. I'm not gonna do that. It's not, just, I don't wear this, I wear this board hat when I come in here and for board decisions, I do not wear it 24/7. I disagree with WADA on that, okay?
And I'll have to take the opposite position as a longtime elected official. The trap is, when you are elected, you are to be held accountable. And that means by the strictures of the office. Now, school boards are unique. I'm, I'm not gonna question whether that isn't awkward or not, because even I struggle somewhat with that. But there's a reason for that. And that is, of course, as an elected official, when you basically have taken a position, you're asking the public to accept this change.
If we're taking a formal vote.
And the point is, this is about something that's been voted on by the board.
Correct.
And so, the problem with it is, you are asking people to make a sacrifice to deal with the change. And the problem with it is, if you drive a wedge in the public by saying, well, those guys voted on that, but you know, they just didn't get it right, because I believe, no, now wait a minute. That's the problem.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. If we take a formal position, and it's been, the majority has voted on, I'm not gonna take a different position. But it's something that's in the periphery of education or, or something that I, that we haven't voted on. I still have my private voice as a private citizen, and I can say that. And let's take, let's take, for instance, recess. Let's say, I think everybody should have two hours of recess, which I don't, but let's just use that. And our district has voted on, they're going to have 30 minutes of recess for the day. My position would not, I would not speak on that issue. But until we had taken that formal position, and if I think that play and exercise is very important in the development of an individual, as an individual, and I will state that in anything I said as an individual, I say, I'm saying this as a private community citizen. And you can, you can look at the law, and that's what you can do, okay? And that's my position, so we can differ.
And I agree with that, because in some instances, like, this is, this belongs to me, this belongs to me, and it's my First Amendment rights, and that's, as an American, I'm able to enjoy that. And I understand that there's a kind of a fine line being elected official and whatnot. But my voice is still First Amendment, as long as I'm not trashing the district or going against our policies. I think, I mean, I think it is a very thin line, but ultimately, we have free speech to talk about things. So, if I'm breaking the policy, let me know, but I'm gonna post great things that we do. And if that's a violation, that so be it, because I'm gonna be like, yes, we voted for the Black Lives Matter resolution. Yeah, I can't wait to do the work. If that's a horrible, ugly thing, I would like to know about it, because I think that's a great thing that we should be promoting. And so, and I did put that on my social media, and I'm very excited I did. So, I guess that's my real question is, where's that line? And I guess that's a legal thing, but I don't think this policy necessarily means I can't do that. But I think it's a great question, Megan, like, to look at.
Yeah, and I think that, if I may, both interesting in their own way, almost two different things that we're talking about.
Yes.
And going to the very specific here, upon actions or decisions that the board may take but has not taken yet or has taken earlier, so it, we are talking about very specific about decisions of the board. What I'm seeing here is
Votes.
Only the board president may make comment either, and I would put media and general public. In my, if I was to read this, social media would be part of this. The only person, and I would also wonder if this means emails, the only person who, who should be ever responding to those would be the board president. And I just want to make sure that that's what I'm reading correctly.
That's what I understood. It's about email. And if we have general public comment that we're making as a board, the board president will be the designee to.
So, I guess.
That's what I understood.
So, can I, can I just finish?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So I guess what I would want on this, because I get a lot of email. I think we all do.
Right.
And a lot of it I don't respond to, because I do leave it to the board president to respond to. And we get the comments back of only, only the president responded. Well, yeah, there was a reason, because I, I have it in my policy that tells me that this is what I need to do. And so.
I don't see it that way.
Okay. I just wanted to, I don't think in this policy is talking about our First Amendment rights.
No.
It's not.
No, I, I'm very much talking about just decisions.
Exactly.
Right, people email us about things that are coming up on our.
You can answer an email.
No, no, but.
But that's not what I'm reading here.
Okay.
What?
I mean, then it needs to be changed, if you think.
What we have to also have as an elected official is the norm of not having multiple people respond to an email and have one person be in charge of responding to that email. And if they need a consultation with the rest of us, then they will do so. That's what this policy is stating. It's not anything other than that. But the, the overarching issue here is what President Clark said, which is board directors, school board directors are unique in that, which is you cannot take a position on social media that is anti the position that the board has voted on.
If our board decision vote formally.
Right, if it's.
There is a difference.
So, so, so also, the other thing that, we had Sandy come here on our board retreat, who said, if three of us are on the same social media, that in itself is breaking OPMA. And, and we cannot have all three of us, because that's the quorum, to be on that social media and respond to things. So that, it, it creates unnecessarily undue burden on the school district by having board members go on social media and speak on. That's, that is the extra. But this policy in itself is just stating that if we get an email, for example, or if we want to make a public comment to the public, it is the duty of the board president. That's what it says here. That's what I understood. If that is different, then we need to discuss that.
I mean, I hear that with email, but I always respond to people saying, hey, thanks for your email. I can't speak on behalf of the board. Feel free to email our board president directly. Like, I always respond, because I don't want people seeing a void. Because to me, I think that people elect us, and if they don't like what we do, they'll not elect us. But as email, I'm always gonna be like, I can't respond on behalf of the board, but thank you for, so much for caring about this issue and emailing us. The board president will get back to you. The other thing I want to say is, this policy was last updated in 2006, and I think that's when Facebook started being popular, isn't 2006? So, I'm going to take it that this does not include social media, and that's probably something we need to look at.
No, if you're taking this literally, I'd have to get off of every social media site I'm on.
Well, my students will be really mad, because we use Instagram to make club meetings and stuff, so.
Use ban.
Sorry, students.
If, if we can, I would like Superintendent to speak.
Yeah, no, first I wanted to say, this is healthy discussion, because what this policy is about, among others, is the board working as one. And specifically to Director Margill's, I think what you were trying to say here is that, that if a vote has been taken, the board chair is the one that speaks to it. They don't, they now do not have to worry about acting alone, because the board act as a whole.
Yes. And just to be very clear, if I may, just since it was my words being quoted, I'm not, I'm just trying, I'm not giving a, do I agree with this or not? I'm just trying to qualify that if I'm reading it the same as everybody else on this dais. Okay, thank you.
And so I'm paraphrasing.
Yes.
The other is on particularly that which has not been discussed as a whole. That's right here on this dais. And that which has not been moved to a vote in any kind of action, even the board president could not speak to that. And so, those are the two pieces around that said, board's a whole. What's been voted on, you champion and work together as a whole. Even the board president wouldn't say if it hasn't been gone, taken action. What's been discussed is really the pieces that we have talked about, yes, as Director Farrar mentioned in our retreat, and others where it is information that should be, whether it's a problem or a concern, a complaint, or whatever, should be coming to the superintendent, including the board president, so that the board president could respond as a whole. And that's happened over time. Where it becomes a problem is when the, one or, one of those is not involved in that. Even if it's just informational, right? Again, it could be construed as if, if it's not been voted on yet, that you are siding with me or you're acting as one. And so I wanted to point that out, because that's really the premise for this, this specific policy. But as far as role responsibilities, there's a whole host of others. What I've just explained there is a part of a board role. And so, because I, I heard whether it be a complaint or a problem, that's clear. That needs to include and be sent to the board president, including the superintendent, in order so that problem solving could happen. It's difficult when neither one knows that. And so, that's what I think it's getting to, to make sure we don't get ourselves into violation of OPMA or whatever it could be. So, that's the summary I'll give, but again, healthy discussion, so that we make sure that we're real clear about the piece. I would also ask our, uh, legal counsel to look into the, the social media piece. I read this as, or general public. It's, you can put it on a bulletin board or, or, you, you have different kind of media. It's still the general public. The media that you use, not everybody has social media. Not everybody uses social media. Not everybody reads or is on social media. Is it still general public? It's the general public that's reading it. And so, I'll have, you know, board president, if you would like, I would have legal counsel take a look at that specific language around, would that be considered social media or not? Because that is a question that, that did come up. President Clark.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, yeah, obviously, we, we need clarity on it. I, I just ask the board to keep in mind, obvious, when, when WADA is creating this, remember, there's what, 295 school districts, and some of them, the school is the primary institution within the community. And they get separated very rapidly over minor things, because they have an extremely limited budget. So, people get their flag issue and stick with it and hope to drive the public discussion in a particular manner. And what, literally, I have seen this. So the board takes a position, and then somebody won't let go. And then the war is on, and it hangs until that board member leaves. And that is so disruptive to letting, keeping the public invited to be a participant in the general discussions, because they come into a hostile atmosphere and, and people are yelling at each other, and it's, it's just extremely unhealthy. So, it, it is restrictive, and it's unlike a position such as a city council. But there, the responsiveness is, in terms of accountability, as a public agency, you don't have the freedom of a city council and city hall. Their constitution is dramatically different. And so, it, it's, it's the uniqueness of our position.
Director, President Clark, respectfully, I disagree. And I have no problem. And I have no problem with a form of vote and a form of position standing with that and no negative after it. I will never give up my right to speak in particular situations. I just won't do it. I mean, if it's on something that's around it or something that we haven't taken- The board is not being voted on as a whole. The board, when you go up for election, is separate. And if I give up my right, then why am I here?
Well, first of all, I think you're overstating the case.
You could, but I, I disagree with you, so.
Well-
We'll move on. It's, it's, it's a friendly disagreement.
Anyway, in, in any case, we'll, we'll seek greater clarity from legal.
Oh, okay. And that's what, I guess I wanted to know from here what the next steps are.
Right.
Is, um, obviously, we have one set of rule. We have, it feels like five different interpretations of it. And it would be nice to see, A, what a clarified reading of just the is as now. And then for those who, once we have a clarified understanding of what it is, is there any changes that are going to happen, right? That's next.
So as we work on policy, remember this is first reading.
Yep.
You'll be, the board will again, will bring this back up in the next reading. It could go second reading until we go to the final reading.
Okay.
That's why I proposed to President Clark that we could get more clarification on that piece, get that to the board. So again, the board could eventually act on this as a whole.
Perfect.
And Director Hamada absolutely totally understand the pieces. And that's why we are doing this on the dais, so that the conversations are had. And eventually, when we move to a next reading, we're going to, we're going to come to a consensus because we're moving forward to the final reading.
Sure.
That's a part of the process. It doesn't mean somebody's right or wrong, it's just a part of the process. And we can have those different opinions, and I think that's a, what I mentioned earlier, is healthy. And not hold each other or indict each other for what we believe in. That's not what your role is about. It really about is eventually coming to, together as a one.
I just, I just worry we're going to restrict ourselves. I, I think with our legal, our legal counsel looks at it. Because then I worry about like, well, if I wear my Black Lives Matter shirt, this is live streamed. So is that general public? Am I wearing like, I read banned books or anything of the like? Or like, I love my, my gay son or whatever? Like, are we going to have issues? Because like, if there happens to be a discussion about book banning and I'm wearing my shirt, or I'm wearing a red for ed for union solidarity and the teachers are on strike, like, to me, I think it's such a thin line and we need to look at all of that. Because I'm not going to have anyone tell me that this is in control of by other people. This is my body, my voice, my First Amendment. So I really want us to take a look at that as well.
I think those are good.
Yeah, it's a good, I mean-
Good comments to bring up.
First Amendment rights, it's, you know, something. But again, I'm going to say it. You can't have someone say, it's my First Ri- Amendment by yelling fire on a movie theater. You can't do that.
Well, that's not protected speech.
Right?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that is, that is something that is detrimental to. So what I'm trying to get at is that, yes, you, we all have our First Amendment, but at the same time, we are elected officials and we're held a different standard than when we were a regular person. So therefore, we have to be very cognizant of what comes out of our mouth.
Yes.
When, where, and how. That's all there is to it, right? So-
I agree with that 100%.
Right, so that's, so what this policy is saying is, is that we just have to function as one entity and not have the, you know, the, the fractionness which can cause the, the public to be able to then doubt that we've got an idea of how to govern. Because what do we say, what do we do, how we do it, all of it matters. It goes down to the classroom. So that's all I believe that this, the policy is saying.
I appreciate that, Vice President Farrar. So I'll add that to the, the speech piece, the speech part that came up. Because again, I want the board to have all this information before we move to, we'll, I'll ask, if it's okay, President Clark, Ms. Holliday, move 1220 to our next policy. Prior to then, we will give you, get to that information. So the board then could come to consensus and move this on to our final reading.
As long as we have all the information, it'll be on the March 1st policy work session.
Thank you.
As second reading.
Okay, everybody okay?
Is that okay?
Agreed.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, of course.
We agree.
Need more information.
We've come to agreement.
See, I told you.
It's good for us, this is the stuff we need to talk about.
Yeah.
We are on to 5271, reporting improper governmental action. The third reading, it's coming back as a third reading. The consensus at the last policy work session on January 4th was to move this to approval on January 25th regular meeting. This was tabled at that meeting. So we're bringing it back for a third reading and discussion. I'll point out that the only changes from our current policy on the books that we have right now is that the definitions have been removed because they've been replaced into the procedure. And it's, the definitions are referenced in the RCW that the links, link to in this. We also noted that governmental action and whistleblower protection was added into the title. And I want to clarify that the RCW, that's 42 dot 41 dot 020, school districts are actually called out as governmental agencies. And I think we heard from people that because we're calling it governmental agencies, that it did not apply to school districts. It absolutely does. So there are very few changes to this policy. But we have it back for a third reading.
Thank you, Ms. Holly and President Clark. I'll turn it over to you for discussion with the board.
Okay.
Can we scroll down to the bottom?
Do you want it out of the changes or-
No, please leave that. Because, oh, scroll up a little bit, in the blue, the bottom part on the first page, that's the part I had issue with last time as I was looking at it. Because I had time to sleep on it, which was good. Because in the comments from WASDA, it says the definition is in the RCW and is also stated in the procedure. And part of my problem with this, about the procedure, was that this, by removing this section, the state legislature can change the RCWs. And I may not like what they say, but because it's referencing the RCWs, then we have to go with whatever the RCW is. So my problem with this, like, even though it's in the RCWs, it's going to be stated in the procedure, removing that section, I feels like kind of ties our hands a little bit. Because if the state legislature changes our RCW, then our policy automatically changes to whatever that is. And I feel like having this policy stated like the way it is, but then the blue cross out, I feel we should leave in, but I'm sure there's going to be discussion about that. That was my main problem with that. And so because of that, then the procedure changes. And so I, that, that's kind of where I'm stuck.
Okay, but, but Joe, you're making it sound like when they make a change, it's instantaneous. And that's not necessarily true. Can I ask law to-
Yeah, I'll have Mr. Brockwell, please come up to the, thank you.
Uh, thank you Superintendent Vella, President Clark, members of the board. I believe the question is what happens when an RCW changes and may be in conflict with this? And that was brought about because our, WASDA suggests these edits that sort of remove that possibility. Is that where we are? And I would, in this instance, tend to agree with WASDA. Because if, if there was an RCW that conflicted with this policy, it would supersede and probably occupy the field of regulation, as they say. And it would apply. So there'd be no need to modify the policy. On the other hand, if you leave the language in and people read our policy and it conflicts with state law eventually, then you've got a problem with people reading our local law who believe it's still to be true when it in fact is preempted by state law. So it's a cleaner policy, and in this regard, I agree with WASDA's counsel. That makes sense? I hope it makes sense.
And actually, just making sure, because pronouns being used, it would supersede. The changes in the RCW would supersede our policy?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry about that, but yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I have another concern on, which I brought up.
I've, I've noted it here, just, we were, haven't gotten to that yet, but yes, I've put that in there.
I want to make sure that Director Benno with that.
It still is a concern of mine because that, right now, they don't conflict. So I, I don't know.
I think finally, what was said, because this has come up not only in policy where law supersedes. That, that's sometimes there's federal or state. And sometimes, and I think, President Clark, you were, it, sometimes it takes time for policy to get caught up with that. But regardless, state law or federal law is going to supersede.
Well, literally, if I'm not mistaken, WASDA is constantly in, in, in the thing and we would get a flash notice-
Yes, yes.
Of the need, and we just would have to come back and amend anyway, so.
There have been some other policies related, so example, law that was just changed on our training for RSROs, for example. That one gave you some time.
Right.
But we needed to move that up.
Right.
Right? So those are the types of things we get from either WASDA or others in saying, so it's, you need to, you need to do that as soon as possible. I, just an example, there are other things that come up, so.
Can I ask a follow-up then? So then, if, if someone who is in the school district is a whistleblower, but they also may have violated a policy, but they're still whistleblowing, what would happen in that scenario? Like, would they be protected? Would they not be protected?
I'll, I'll ask Mr. Brockwell. I think I was following, but I think he was following better than I was.
That's a great question, Joe. And I, I'm, I'm sorry you asked it in public.
I'm not. I'm not.
But I think you'd have to weigh the equities, look into what happens in that, the situation. And I can get an answer for you, though. That's a really good question. Because what if, what if a whistleblower was inadvertently participating in the very thing he's blowing a whistle about?
Right.
Yeah, I think those, in, in that kind of case, the equities are in favor of the whistleblower. They would be probably afforded some whistleblower protection, unless it's, you know, murder or something like that.
Well, and so that's why it's like the improper action is defined by any action by the district. So if we remove that section, then does that say then, oh, then they don't get protections even if they violated a policy?
Uh, I would just, you may not recall from last week, but that exact same language is replaced in our practice. And so if we get a notice from WASDA that that policy or that state law changes, we'll change our, our, our practice, which-
That's the part that was moved to the procedures?
Yes.
Is that what we're saying?
Procedure, right.
Procedure.
Could, I'm sorry, could you say, state that last interaction one more time again?
Uh, the, the language Director Benno is concerned about was-
Yep.
Put in our procedure.
Okay.
Instead of in the policy.
Yep.
But it still is applicable. So it's the exact same verbiage. It's in the first section, defining improper governmental action.
We as board directors create the policy. Staff creates the procedure. So wouldn't we want this in our policy? Because any new people or whatever can just change the policy. But if we, the board, want to make sure that it is definitely a practice, we should include it in our policy, right? Or is that, or am I overstepping?
You mean, you can change the procedure?
Anyone can say change the procedure, but we as a board make the policy.
Right, I, I, you know, I, I'm not in the mind of WASDA why they, why they advise this. I like shorter, more concise policies. And so that's one of the reasons I like this kind of change. And then if the people are curious about it, they go to our practice, which is published right on the same deal. And then the first paragraph, it outlines what you need to do.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Thank you, I really do appreciate that.
Yeah, no, procedure needs to align with the policy. And in this case, it would, right? And law, sometimes that occurs. And as President Clark mentioned, it's, it's kind of catching up sometimes. And so, yeah, in this case, that is true.
But if we left it in there, the procedure would still be the same, right? So I guess I just, I don't see a difference.
But Joe, again, if you leave misinformation up, it creates problems.
But is that misinformation?
Well, the point for the removal is that it says point blank, the RCW is the way we're going to go.
At this point, it is the RCW. I guess that's why I just don't understand. Because if it's already the RCW, then what's the difference?
And I think that's why WASDA removed it. Kelsey Winters, who you can see that the comments are made by Kelsey Winters from WASDA, is because she mentions, calls out the fact that this line is in RCW.
That's my two cents.
President Clark.
Other two cents.
Are we ready for me? The third paragraph, and what I brought up in the dais on our regular meeting when we went to approve this, is, I want, it says, "A superintendent designee will establish procedures for receiving and acting on employment reports of improper governmental action and responding to allegations of retaliation." And I wanted something copied to, you know, reference to the board members that were made aware of this. And that's not in there.
And again, we're back to procedures? Would, can you address that?
Yeah, they, I'll have Mr. Brockwell come up. In short, it is, what this sentence says is what's true in all policies. A superintendent will establish procedure. And that procedure is to implement the policy in this case. And so I'll let Mr. Brockwell speak to that.
Thank you Superintendent Vella, President Clark, members of the board. We did hear you loud and clear on that. And so we went back to the proposed procedure. And we talked about inserting very simply and elegantly just a few words in there. And I can just read to you what we have in mind. After an investigation has been completed, the reporting employee will receive, I'm sorry, the employee, reporting employee and the board of directors will receive a summary of the investigation results. The board of directors was not included in the first draft. So there will be a reporting to you. And that seemed to be the, the solution.
And it doesn't have to be in the policy?
No, I don't think so. If you, if the board wants that, more of a concrete, yes, you shall report to us, then you can do that. But this, from the last meeting, it was change the procedure and, and we'll pass the policy.
Well, I've done some thinking.
Okay.
And I think, I think it should be in, in, in the policy.
Leslie, can I ask you a question too? What I heard you say is that you want to know of whistleblower actions, which is different than knowing about after the investigation and the completion and how it followed. Two very different things.
Right.
And so, one, do we put it in policy or procedure? And two, is it all whistleblower initial actions or is it the completed?
Now, I think you raise a really good point. We envisioned in this practice that it would be after the investigation. So it would be after the initial complaint, after the-
No, no, I don't want that.
Okay, let me just finish.
Okay.
The way the policy reads is if somebody is a whistleblower, they go to their supervisor. And we may not even know about it at that point. But the supervisor raises it through the ranks and they gain this protection. They don't only get the protection of the whistleblower status if they follow that procedure. There also is a component of anonymity where they are promised that to be anonymous to the extent possible. And so raising this to the level of the board, the minute they make the whistleblower complaint, may be inconsistent with that. So we thought this was be an elegant way of just reporting to the board. Thirdly, the, the distinction between board oversight and administrative functions in this raises its head. The, the board does not generally investigate or provide oversight in investigations in administrative matters. So what would be the point of initially telling the board or inviting them in on the investigative side?
I don't think that informing the board of an investig, ongoing investigation automatically nor even suggests that they have oversight of it.
Okay.
I think that that just gives knowledge of it.
Right. Right, we could certainly, you know, this is your policy. I don't, I feel like I'm arguing against my own friends here. It's really what you want to do.
No, but I still think it, it needs to be asked.
Yeah.
Yeah. And whether you're saying it's right or wrong, I, I think clarifying what it means is, is more of what I was asking for.
You know, and I'm, I'm going to throw a rock into this discussion. Leslie, the, the, I understand- Leslie, the, I understand what you're trying to get at because you need to be informed of, of the outcome. But you have to have a basic trust that the superintendent and his minions are doing their job within the strictures of the law. And if you are knowledgeable of something that's being investigated, then the reverse becomes true. Can the superintendent trust that the board will not discuss with anyone? And you're better off very simply saying, no. If we have to have a correction, it will be taken after the action has been taken, not before. And that's the problem.
Actually, President Clark, I think I would agree with that. The problem I have with it is, and I'm going to state this openly, I have ultimate trust in Superintendent Vella and what's going on today. Say horrible, superintendent has a major medical issue, we're back to hiring an interim, or we have a new superintendent. This should be a general policy. And what I'm trying to get at for our community, which I'm supposed to be representing, is an assurance that the culture in this district is being more transparent and that you will be heard and you will be protected. And it won't be by one person really overseeing all of this. That's my problem. I want to dis... I want a more of a balance of power.
And, and, and I appreciate what you're trying to get at because it certainly is true. We want to follow process fairly. So I don't have a problem with that. But, and if you're... But you can't get ahead of the operational side when it's an actual investigation. You have to keep hands off.
Oh, I agree. I mean, what it would include in that, that's where this total board trust would be. If we're made aware of this, we absolutely cannot, that cannot, that's in an executive session. It absolutely cannot go beyond the boardroom. And that's, that is one thing that you can't have go out of there. If we agree to do, but that also gives the community that their elected officials are here for a reason.
Well, and, and you're in the process of that right now, policy in terms of how you respond to change.
Again, I've seen in the culture that our community needs to be reassured of that. So that's my opinion.
And ultimately with policy, if we want a procedure to be written the way we want it, it has to be included in policy. So like, as, because as board directors, we create the policies. So if we want to see something in action where a procedure is written, whatever we want needs to be written in the policy because that's our purview. So to me, I, I feel very good about having lots of discussion about all the policy things we want because that's our purview and for however long we want, it may be boring to people, but not to me because this is stuff I like. So, but ultimately, like, if we want something and we really can make a consensus, then we should include it in the policy. Like, and then the procedure would be written for it because that's what the board would want.
Okay, can I ask the superintendent how he feels about that?
Yeah, no, I, I think what we heard from the last session was that the board be informed. That's what we heard in President Clark. And Director Margel, you, I think, summarized that well from what you heard. And that's the reason my team went back and said, hey, the board is going to be informed. By the way, you'd be informed either way. The procedure, the procedure is what we came up with based on what we heard and saying, yeah, we definitely will put it in there so that the board can be assured that they will be informed. That's what my team went back with, so.
If I may, first, I, I'm sorry, President Clark, I do need to say, I do have a little issue with, with using the word minions for education professionals.
I wanted to say that, too.
I, I'm sorry. Huge respect for everybody in this room and all of the education professionals that we have.
Thank you for saying that.
Minions is not the word that should be, and I think you would have corrected it if you said it again. Thank you. Second, I have to say, if there's something you care about enough, putting it somewhere that can be changed at any time doesn't seem like the right place to have it. So if it's something that we're having this much discussion on and we want to have it, it feels like it's within the policy that it should be, not in the procedure, personally. And, and I, I hear you that we should not have oversight, but knowledge of is something very different than oversight. And I do think that, and I hear anonymity is important. Absolutely, you don't have to say whom reported, but there was a report of this happening within the district. And what that can allow for is making sure that things are followed up in a timely fashion, whatever that is. And which, I, I don't know, is that supervisory? I don't think so. The other thing is, is what I'm not sure of is if a, because it kind of, it's struck out in here, gross waste of public funds and things like that. Would that be something that would be reported? If it's, you know, would it, because it's deemed frivolous or deemed, would we never hear about it, right? And I think that that's important to know, especially on a dollar and cents, that things are brought up and they are very costly to the district. And there has been maybe some frivolity been proven on some of them. And it, it's important to know as stewards of our taxpayers' money where all of that is going. And whistleblower is today something that costs our district money. And so I think knowing both how many are put up front and where they end up at the end is important. And so that's what I'm not seeing first in the procedure. And I, I'm still not hearing why putting, the superintendent will establish procedures for receiving and acting on employee reports of improper governmental procedures and responding to allegations of retaliation with dual notice given to the board.
I mean, exactly, that, can we just say that and then move on? Because it seems like that's all we care.
So I'll have Mr. Brockwell come on.
Certainly, if that's the, the board, this is your policy, makes total sense, intellectually honest and...
Are you okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
So I had asked President Clark if Ms. Hully could post it like we typically do up here. The board has conversation. Let's...
Oh, please, my word was...
Director Margel, if you could repeat that?
Oh, it was not the best. Ah! It's at the end, notice shall be given to the board.
Of dual notice?
Something like that.
Just next paragraph, notice shall, I mean, just make it simple.
Yeah.
Notice will be given to the board.
Bingo.
Regarding this report?
Okay.
Regarding this action?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, maybe I could provide some other comfort. As long as there's a general counsel in this spot, they have an independent obligation aside from the superintendent to come to you and, and warn you or tell you about big risks. And some of this stuff involves big risk, you know. Say, say there was an internal auditor, a state auditor, you know, guess, hey, look, there's something wrong. I would come to you or somebody in my spot would come to you necessarily and say, as your legal counsel, here's, here's some exposure. So there is that sort of redundancy and that's required under the rules of professional conduct apart from your policies.
Is there a point that that would happen and outside counsel would do that instead? Or is that always going to be you?
I think if outside counsel knew about it, they would, they would come to you. If, it depends on how often they were interacting with you and that kind of thing. If there were outside counsel that just handled a bond, probably not. But if they are in the routine, yeah, they, they probably should and they know about it, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Thank you for the information on that. And I think it should be, again, said that these policies are written in a very generic way for all different...
Districts, yeah.
Superintendents and general counsel and, and not because of, you know, I don't, I, I think that we have a great administration that is giving us this information right now. And then, and so I would hate to be in a position where we weren't getting this and that. And so it's written for the possibility, not because of anything that's happening today that is of concern.
So President Clark is the, and the rest of the board, we have language that we're looking for.
I have one other. In, in the first paragraph, the third line, when it says, "For reporting improper governmental actions", how does governmental actions, how, how does that cover our district policies with the whistleblower thing?
Again, you were designated as a government agency.
So that covers that part of it. Okay, explain that to me a little bit more because I'm, I'm missing something here.
I do, it's awkward language. I don't disagree with Brockwell.
Sorry making you guys work tonight.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. We may have moved that into our practice, but governmental, improper governmental action is defined and that says that is in violation of federal, state, or local law, is an abuse of authority, is of substantial specific danger to the public or health or safety, and is a gross waste of public funds. And the WASDA person took out district policy as, as part of that definition. And I think because, the way I read it, you know, we have a lot of policies. But what we're talking about is something significant. We're talking about theft and graft and something that causes danger and risk and that kind of thing, the way it's described. And to me, that would not, not include your run-of-the-mill workplace policies that are not prescribed by state law. So there has to be sort of this higher threshold for the whistleblower status to be given when, when somebody's making an objection to it. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
That makes a lot of sense and thank you for clarifying that. But I wonder if we could clarify that for our general community in somewheres. A notation at the bottom or something, this is for higher, I don't know how you do that, Paul, but something like this is for more grave...
Oh, yeah. We could, we could come up with some language for the next time and talk about the intent of the policy.
And then that would make me beautifully happy.
Okay.
May also potentially for the board, put a link to that governmental.
Yes.
There you go.
I think that would be more precise, like we did before, might be the route to go.
I was going to suggest cross-referencing stuff because if we take out district policy and people go to this and like, well, I'm thinking I'm whistleblowing, but like, oh, no, 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 district policy doesn't apply. Can we put cross-references to, if there is a concern about something that's happened against policy, go here, like cross-reference all those things like we've done in some of the other documents? I think that would make me feel better about that part being taken out.
President Clark, rest of the board?
I'm not sure I understood that.
So if I may, to make sure I'm understanding. So somebody reads through this, I have an issue with a policy of the district. It does not qualify because I'm reading the link of what whistleblower is, and my issue does not qualify for that status. There's a, a language below, you're suggesting, that says, you know, if you have concerns over a violation of policy that does not qualify for whistleblower, here's your remedy.
Like in some of the documents, there's things that cross-reference where they can click directly to that. That's what I'm suggesting is adding cross-reference. This document doesn't have any cross-references, but I'm suggesting that we do. But like this document also includes some of the RCWs, whichever this one, this one was. This is 1,000 or 1,400 where it has those things in there. I think that would be helpful to do legal links and cross-reference links.
We can definitely do that.
Justing though that there's also language that states...
Correct.
Okay.
In this, in where it says these links, yeah, because that's what we've done before. That would make me feel better because if someone goes to this and there's no cross-referencing, they're going to think that this is the way to do that.
We can definitely put the cross-references into applicable policies that would not rate the level of the whistleblower.
Correct. I would, that would make me like it better.
I like it, yeah.
Well, because we also want to help anybody who's reading it use the right remedy for the right issue.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because while the policies make sense, so as they don't always make sense to parents and families who are reading this, we want to make sure everything's accessible as possible.
Are we moving this ahead or are we just coming back for another reading?
I think there's enough that needs to come back for reading because there's enough corrections that we're asking for to happen.
And I'd also like our, Mr. Brockwell to double-check language on the previous notation as well again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for direction on that.
We are on to 4220. The board had its first reading and discussion of policy 4220 at the November 2nd Policy Work Session. There were, the board had a lot of feedback on the changes that were suggested. So we thought we'd start with just a clean version of WASDA model policy and go from there. Now, this is in WASDA's format, but I want you to see it as it is in WASDA's format. I formatted it in KSD format, so it's congruent to what we normally look at. And let's start from there.
I'll ask President Clark to begin our discussion on 4220. I'll also just add that the board had been provided some information from our legal counsel. So I'll just turn it over to you for discussion.
Okay. Well...
Okay, I guess I was going to let anybody else talk.
You can go first, I have other concerns.
Okay. This took a long time for us to change this in 2020. And I do not want to change the part in this policy that refers to the superintendent. And the one that was accepted to date, I don't agree with. I just, I, somewheres in this, and I don't think we should do, I have no problem with the staff on staff. They have lots of other alternatives to take their issues with. And I don't really think, they really don't have control over the board to bring issues. We don't need that. But again, the same reasoning that I've said all along is we put in there that the buck stops with the superintendent, which it mostly should have. He's the most, he or she's the most educated, the person we hired to do this and the person we should trust the most and over the staff. But it came up again and again before we had our present superintendent that once it got to the superintendent, you had no recourse and you just felt helpless, the parents or whoever. And I'm not talking about frivolous claims. I'm talking about something that rises to the occasion, that's gone through all the steps on the superintendent that we, it still comes to the board. And I want that in there. And I realize that a lot of this has been, there's so many things that have gone on, on this, that it's gotten out of hand. And we do have to fiscally do the best, be, be the best stewards of the taxpayers' dollar. I ask our attorney to pull up some stuff. And I, and in my memory, we've only had two, two major issues on the superintendent which have been settled. One that really didn't even get to us and one that we, we saw and heard. That to me is not a huge fiscal responsibility. Again, our community wants a way for our elected officials, if there's such a grievance that has risen over time and not been satisfied, that the only issue that we can have is at the end of the year on the contract. And I think if there's a major issue, that's a problem with dealing with it then. So if something rises to the position where it's a complaint against the superintendent, you need to have some recourse. And that's, and again, I'm going to say, I have absolutely complete faith in our superintendent. I trust him 100%, but he could be here and gone or something terrible could happen. Or down the road, we might have another individual in that place. And I have sat here in this chair and witnessed things that I was supposed to be responsible for and people got, brought to me and said, why didn't you do something? I had no knowledge of, no knowledge. And I don't want to be in that position.
And, and, and I appreciate that, Leslie. And I certainly do not deny that you didn't have a troubling start because very clearly... have a troubling start because very clearly Superintendent Watts was not interested in trying to engage the board beyond where he was currently at. So the trap that you have there, though, is what we've already discussed. The primary restrictions in terms of oversight with the superintendent does rest with his evaluation. And I'm well aware of the fact that, of course, Watts completely eliminated anything resembling a nationally accredited policy in terms of how to evaluate. But you're now into a circumstance where you're going through a process of evaluation of the superintendent, and it is truly a process. It is conversations among us as board directors looking at a matrix that we apply, that we approved, and it can, of course, be changed. So our ability to respond is much quicker. Now, in the circumstance that you found yourself in, your fellow board members were not helping you because they didn't press on that evaluation process. So I feel bad about that, but that's no longer the case. And so if something were to happen and we suddenly were faced with an interim superintendent, the evaluation process and the criteria is what we create, what we enforce, and what we are in ongoing discussions with as the year progresses. So I, I appreciate the terrible circumstances you found yourself in, but I'm suggesting to you that the normal process is exactly what you're in right now. And in fact, Superintendent Vella, if you want to address how you derive the current process that we're using.
Absolutely. I think I, I will, and I want to just set the, the purpose for this, again, which I've shared before, that this was originally set, and if you look at WASD, for school buildings, staff and programs, for them to have a way to be able to say, hey, I'm not happy with program, or I'm not happy with this individual within, because it could be staff. Staff are everybody that I, in my role, oversee. The board has one staff, and that's the superintendent. That's the one employee. So the first paragraph there, I just want to call your attention to that the purpose of that is that all of those employee complaints are referred to the superintendent, staff complaints, so that the superintendent can move ahead with his team, of course, to find a resolution, actually, and make a decision. That is part of the operational piece. As you move into the next part, it is that the superintendent will develop procedures to handle those complaints. Similar to I said before, the superintendent develops those procedures. So where they become in conflictive is when that complaint is either a board member, which we've discussed, or the superintendent. Again, back to who's the staff, your one staff is the superintendent. So that's the specific piece that I believe that Mr. Brock Vogel has shared before in the past, that that's where it becomes in conflict, that you've got, in a sense, the superintendent investigating his or her complaint, because that's what it says in your current, in the policy, even the current one. And so I share that just for the kind of level setting. And so the question for Director Hamada that you're stating really is, and I appreciate your comment, because it is, it's mutual for our board. Totally trust our board to work together and make policy that is going to allow the superintendent to be able to solve problems. That's what this one is. And, and that's the piece that the board does not do. The board doesn't go in and actually conduct the investigation. In fact, you want to stay far away from those pieces. Because at some point, you may have to, you've heard me say that before, allow the superintendent to do that. And so that's the level setting that I will state, and then I would also like Mr. Brock Vogel to add to that in terms of the question that's at hand right now. What is the difference of putting the superintendent in the policy? Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Superintendent Vella, President Clark, and members of the board. You recall last time, we had a couple changes to the WASD, or to our existing policy, and then we started reviewing the WASD policy, which is real clean, real concise, and we like those because they're clear. So for your consideration tonight, we're, we're talking about three additional edits to this, wherever, wherever they fit in, however they look, but that is the first one, removing the superintendent. Second one, removing explicitly the board, because we had a couple complaints or people wanting to file against the board last time, which thus, last year, which indicated to me that they read the policy and it wasn't clear that the board was not intended to be the subject of a complaint. So we think that's a good idea. And then the third one is to remove the employee-on-employee thing. So as to the, removing the superintendent, we think it's a good idea because it encourages complaints against the superintendent, particularly that are not founded, particularly in election years. I've been doing government work for a long time, and around those elections, they pick on the general manager or the superintendent as a way of developing a horse to ride into office. And so what staff will get, we predict, is a bunch of frivolous complaints against the superintendent and a politician or two that may say, goodness sakes, look at all these complaints. We don't need, see the need to risk that. It's pretty obvious that that happens during campaigns. And, and in fact, it happens with disgruntled employees as well. It's only happened twice, but they combine 4220 with other complaints and they appeal to you. And it's a bit of a mess, and there's no point in it. It also does not foster this idea that the, the superintendent runs the place administratively. So if he's got employees or members of the public that want to challenge every decision he makes, or a subordinate makes, they can simply just file a complaint. And, and they know it's going directly to the board. So it's sort of like a run to the boss and complain, or run to the parent and complain, no matter the merits. And, you know, I could tell you after a couple of these, while the board may not see the work that goes into it, it's a ton of distraction behind the scenes. One or two of those were quite a bit of work to get to you. So we just don't think it's advisable. We've looked at other jurisdictions. There's a sort of a split of authority on it, but most do not have this as a feature. Most do not allow complaints directly to the SI. They stick with WASD's original intent, which is Series 4000, as the superintendent pointed out. This was originally intended to be community relations, that's where it falls in our policy. So that envisions a complaint from an outside parent or so forth against the school teacher or whatever, and they can appeal it up. It never really envisioned a direct complaint against the superintendent, who doesn't have much relationship with the students on a day-to-day. So for those reasons, we think it's appropriate to remove the superintendent. Also doesn't encourage any resolution to problems. It encourages and fosters a culture of complaints, which I've been pointing out internally into the board for quite some time, that instead of a manager or a teacher resolving a matter, there's an encouragement that, that a complaint is filed. And you talk about the future, Leslie, and I totally agree that you have faith in, in the superintendent, and we as staff have faith in this composition of the board, too. But we have seen the past make-up of the board abuse some of these complaints and encourage complaints against certain people. And we don't see this risk needed to be taken going forward when this board changes inevitably. Anyway, so those are sort of my pitch for this, but this, again, is your, this is your policy. As to the removal of employee-on-employee, I'm hearing some good news, at least from Director Hamada, that there's some support for that. But I would reiterate that there are plenty of avenues for complaining. And one of the things that we've noticed that I haven't really talked about is the elevation of 4220 on par with other statutory rights, like the right to work in a hostile-free environment, the right to work in a discrimination-free environment. Those are serious, serious issues. But under 4220 world, if you got a review coming up from your boss and you think you're going to get disciplined, or whatever your issue is, you simply file a 4220 complaint, and it jams it all up, and everybody knows it. And we have an obligation to follow through, and it's a mess. So it, on the employee, employee, I think we're, we're all sort of understanding that that, that doesn't really work. Again, I think for all the jurisdictions, we've looked at, I sent you a chart today, we've got a number of them that don't allow it. And our specific policy on the books today does not specifically allow an employee-on-employee complaint, but we've got into this culture of accepting all complaints and stirring it up.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So what's being proposed here is if we specifically say that the superintendent cannot have a 4220 complaint, that will keep frivolous complaints from happening and the costs that's associated with them.
Right.
So what would keep somebody who has a frivolous complaint for then making it against every director here that reports to the superintendent or to every principal that enacts the policies of the superintendent? So my point is that the complaints would still be made, but just against a different person or group of persons, and so we would still be having the complaints and the expenses. I, I don't see how that stops complaints by making it so it can't be against the superintendent.
I think there's a, it's a good question, and I'm glad you brought it up. The complaints in that fashion would be handled by the superintendent himself, and it wouldn't involve the board. So you would know instantly, is this on its face a legitimate complaint? And you'd treat it accordingly. If it was a preposterous complaint, you may not pour a bunch of resources into it. But that would be under the, the purview of the superintendent.
So to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, so the difference is, is that because the named person is not the superintendent, the superintendent has the ability to look at the complaint on its face and be able to throw it out?
He has procedures that he will develop for every employee that's complained against. The board does not have those procedures.
Yeah.
And so we're working on, at least at this moment, on an ad hoc basis about what do we do when we get a complaint?
So we, so the expense is coming in that we're having to fully investigate all of them, no matter how legitimate or carefree they are?
Well, there's, there's that. I'm not going to say that it's the expense that's the problem. I'm just saying it's, it's potential time suck, it's a potential distraction.
Well, time is money. I mean, really, I mean, it's our employees' money, it's the paper, it's the, it's, it's the legal expenses, it's all of it, right? Yeah.
And it's the big distraction when he, when the board gives him goals, you guys agree on a goal, and there's some gadfly out there that says, you know what, I'm going to gum the works up. I'm going to file a complaint, and I'm going to make them investigate, and then I'm going to send records requests. That's the other aspect of this.
Oh, yeah.
Every time we get a complaint, it's followed by all these records requests for the results and the notes, and, and when people want to protect their job, or they have it out for another employee, they file these complaints, and then they make records requests and.
So.
Unpleasant.
To summarize this, the, we don't have issue of having to not use 4220 employee against employee.
I don't have an issue with that.
There's other remedies.
There are other remedies, right? Other remedies, and, and we don't have an issue of using the 4220 against a board member.
Right.
You just don't vote people.
As long as, so the first thing you said, as long as it's cross-referenced in here that says, where do I file this complaint? Because here in the crossed-out section, it says, will be handled through provisions made in an applicable collective bargaining agreement, conditions stated in district policy, but this is district policy, it says, and/or contacting human resources, but doesn't say which. So I would say we need to cross-reference, if, if that's the thing, then I would be okay with that, then it needs to be cross-referenced. Where is the process? Because if I'm looking at this, I want to file a complaint, and it says, nope, you can't file a complaint against another employee, I'm going to be like, well, where the hell do I do that? Because this is what I thought it was.
I think that's a, that's a great idea, and one of the policies we looked at had a really robust list.
Nice, yes.
Because we really want complaints about discrimination and those kinds of things to actually happen.
Right.
We're not trying to discourage.
Well, we don't want them to happen, but if they do happen, we want to know about them.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification. President Clark, I just wanted to add, great conversation, that the process that these complaints have, still have CBAs, they're dependent on the staff. They have CBAs that we must adhere to in addition to 4220, right? And so that's something that I, I do all, no matter who it is, I need to see in parallel, is it a state or federal law that's being broken or something I need to follow, et cetera? And so I'm going to ask President Clark that we continue the conversation, come back with any more information. I think, President Bennett, you mentioned having a cross-reference. Let's come back with that for the rest of the board to like take a look at at our next meeting.
Thank you.
President Clark.
Point of privilege, can I say, Ms. Hully, that we've been working on policies, is it possible to like include your presentation, how many policies that?
We've done so far.
Like, I don't, not asking for every month, but probably every quarter.
Absolutely. We talked about that today.
Right? So therefore, it's, it's, really, it's like all of us, it's something that will make us.
You're doing great.
Right. I mean, we just want to see what, so a lot of times, we forget how much work that we've done.
Yeah, I agree.
At this moment, eight of the 11 that we discussed today, we plan on moving forward.
That's a lot.
And it's really good.
Right. I mean, just give us like, for example, you know, first quarter, this is how many policies that we worked on.
Each time.
Absolutely.
So that we know, like, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approaching Valentine's Day, I want central administrative certified staff to know that I love them. And with that, seven hundred and thirty words adjourned.